I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I notice we have a couple of students in the audience. We always like to acknowledge students that are here. Are, by any chance, are you a scout? Well, we would love to hear your name, where you go to school, and what badge you're working on. Great, well, welcome. And after the board meeting, if you have any questions, feel free to come up and we'll be happy to answer for you, okay? And then, young lady, would you like to tell everyone your name and what school you go to? Great, thanks, Amanda, I'm glad you're here tonight. Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge the students because they're the reason we're here. Okay. Next up is our board agenda. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's special board of directors meeting. I move to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next up, we have the monitoring of our district operations policies. The first one that we have up is our operational expectations, which is labeled OE5, financial planning. This is a first reading. And what I would like to do, let's see here. So, just for some background, the members of the board have received the superintendent's reasonable interpretation of our policy with indicators and monitoring report on this operational expectations of financial planning. It's now the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of a reasonable organizational compliance in this area. So what I'd like to do is call on Dr. Stich to give us some more background on it, on this report.
Thank you, Victoria. OE5 is our financial planning operations expectations policy. I've worked with members of cabinet to come up with interpretations to the board's policy, as well as what we feel are reasonable indicators to show our compliance with this policy. It's on, in the board docs, and so I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I would like to just kind of hit the highlights of the board's policy and the work that we are expecting ourselves to do in order to bring this back to the board with evidence for monitoring to show that we were in compliance with their financial planning expectations. So the board starts off in their policy by saying the superintendent will develop and present to the board a multi-year financial plan that is related directly to the board's results priorities and the operational expectations goals and that avoids long-term financial jeopardy to the district. The initial section that we provided outlines our interpretation of that, where the board focuses on continual learning and disruptions to the financial planning of the district could have adverse impact on student learning, which is the overall philosophy. We've gone in and defined the terms multi-year financial plan, financial jeopardy, and minimum unreserved fund balance within our interpretation. Some of the specific expectations under 5.1, the superintendent will develop a budget that is in summary format understandable to the board and presented in a manner that allows the board to understand the relationship between the budget and the results priorities and any operational expectations goals for the year. When you look at the budget document, it's usually about an inch and a half thick that Mike presents during our budget hearings, those don't really meet that definition. So what we have committed to as a district is providing the proposed budget accompanied by a budget executive summary document that will provide levels of spending associated with each of the operational expectations policies, as well as the achievement of reasonable progress towards student improvement results. So you will see specific categories of all of the OE policies and the results policies and the amount of money that we've dedicated in the budget to be able to either maintain or achieve compliance to the OEs or actual improvement of student performance results. So what you will see, what you would anticipate seeing in that is curriculum adoptions, professional development of staff. Our device deployment this year would be considered something that we would be putting into the budget that is targeting, targeted at improving student results. The next item on this, 5.2, is the superintendent will develop a budget that credibly describes revenues and expenditures. So within, in addition to the budget document, to meet compliance with this, the board will know we're in compliance when all revenues and expenditures within the proposed budget are reasonable and clearly connected to foundational documents, which we will reference the RCWs, OSPI directives, and labor agreements. These will be explained to the board during the budget hearing to a level where the board supports approval of the budget as presented. So we will get into what are those assumptions or how do we derive the revenues and the expenditure elements, rather than just presenting a budget. So you'll have a separate attached document to comply with that. The superintendent will also develop a budget that shows the amount spent in each budget category for the most recent completed financial year, the amount budgeted for the current fiscal year, and the amount budgeted for the next year. So within each of these documents, we'll give you a three-year budget look of, as we're presenting this in August, August will be the current year, so you would have the previous year. So as an example, this year, you would have had the 15-16 school year as completed, 16-17 school year as of August with the books almost closed, and then the proposed 17-18 school year budget. So we'll give you all of those budget categories so you can clearly see if there's any changes in spending levels within those budget categories or shifts based on the percentage of the overall budget going into those areas. Section 5.4 requires the superintendent to develop a budget that discloses budget planning assumptions. And Mike often kind of walks through during the budget hearing what those assumptions are that we have to make because often there's items that we don't have clarity from Olympia from when we're developing the budget. Also, things we're not sure how they're going to play out during the year. So we will be providing you a written document with all of those assumptions that accompanies the budget as well. The superintendent will develop a budget that assures financial soundness in future years. So we are going to present with the budget a four-year budget plan which identifies and addresses significant changes in program or operational support. So from our perspective, we should be able to look ahead with the strategic plan we're going to work to develop. We should be able to project out three to four years in the future. Are there any significant expenditures we need to do to support instructional initiatives for student improvement? And at the same time, this new state law requires that we provide you with a four-year budget outlook, so we will do our best in the way of revenues to get out our magic eight ball and decide what Olympia is actually going to provide for us four years from now when we have no idea what they're going to provide a year from now.
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
So we will do our best to comply with that, but the new state requirement, we felt, really meets the board's desire in that area. 5.8 was superintendent will develop a budget that reflects anticipated changes in employee compensation included inflationary adjustments, step increases, performance increases, and benefits. So we will give you a summary document by employee category that shows you what contractual obligations we have put into the budget and how all of the salaries and benefits are adjusted to comply with state increases and contractual increases for every employee category. Something that you've kind of, we've shared with you verbally but haven't really put in writing. So from a transparency standpoint, you're going to be getting many documents that you've never gotten before that are going to show people in very layman term summary format what our budget is really about. I've got three more, I think, left to cover. The superintendent will develop a budget that includes such amounts as the board determines to be necessary for its own governing function, including board member training, consultation, attendance, and professional conferences, events, and other matters identified by the board. So again, this is something that's been in the budget. There is a budget line item for board expenditures. We'll be teasing that out in a little bit more detail and directing you to specifically what, where that is in the budget by page number, as well as outlining what components of that examples would be. Last year, we went to the National School Boards Conference. So if you were planning to go again this year, which we've discussed that we're not going to go this year, that would be a line item that we would want built into that budget for your professional development. We had a meeting yesterday on the linkages and communications that I'll be talking about a little bit later. That's another area. If there's expenses associated with meetings with stakeholder groups that the board anticipates having, those would need to be embedded within that budget as well. So we'll make sure that in alignment with your annual plan that we'll be discussing in July and August, that that's fed into the budget and supported by this budget document. The superintendent may not develop a budget that plans for the expenditure in any fiscal year of more funds that are conservatively projected to be available during the year. In simple terms, you're directing me to make sure that my expenditures are below revenues. There is one caveat with that, that there may be one-time spending if we have excess unreserved cash fund balance, that I would specifically dictate or direct how those funds were being spent and those were one-time expenditures, and verify or validate to the board that those funds are truly available for revenues to exceed expenditures. And we'll do a cross-reference during the budget presentation to ensure you're comfortable that we've met that requirement. The superintendent may also not develop a budget that provides for an anticipated year-end fund balance of less than 5% of the previous fiscal year's actual general fund expenditures. That's been in policies before. It's in the new governance policy. And we will be identifying where in the budget exactly that exists in our final end-of-year projections and providing to the board evidence that we will budget to ensure we maintain that 5% fund balance. So those are the elements that we have of OE5. I'm presenting that to the board tonight. So at this time, I recommend that the board accepts the reasonable interpretation indicators and monitoring report for OE5 financial planning and that the reports be moved forward for a second reading and adoption.
At this time, I would like to give opportunity for the audience to ask questions or to make comments regarding this policy and the interpretations and monitoring report. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Okay. So at this time, I am going to call for a motion on Dr. Stich's recommendation.
I move that the board accepts the superintendent's reasonable interpretation indicators and monitoring report for operational expectation 5, OE5, financial planning as presented.
Want that moved forward for a first reading and, or for a second reading?
Oh, yeah, and move it forward for a second reading.
At this time, are there any questions or comments by the board on this?
Do you need a second? I second.
Before we take a vote, I'd like to see if there's any questions or comments by the board on this.
I want to direct a question to Dr. Stich if I could. About the OE5.3, where you're going to be breaking the budget amounts out by category according to the operational expectations for those three years. You gave the example of 15-16 as a previous year and then a current finishing year and then the next year. You also have to do some thinking about next year and the three years after that to satisfy the statutory requirement. Will that be a lighter document, a separate lighter document?
Well, we foresee these as one, maybe two-page reports that are summary reports. One is the kind of the three-year look back and the four-year look ahead with one year overlap in the middle, so you're going to have basically a six-year projection. But the actual content of those may be slightly different because the focus on one, obviously, is continuity of spending. The other's projecting to ensure that we maintain that 5% cash reserve based on the reasonable assumptions we have at the given time on what that four-year look ahead is going to be. And that four-year look ahead is also going to be part of our planning process for what our enrichment levy request to the community would be and the documentation that we now have to provide to OSPI on how we anticipate spending our enrichment level because OSPI has to approve our enrichment levy spending before we can actually do the resolution to take it before the voters.
Thank you.
And I would imagine that as things adjust, if financially we don't have the funding that was projected, we would get reports that would indicate why and the adjustments in each of those budget categories.
It'll be interesting to see how close we are on our four-year projection as we get closer to four years in the future. I see Mike shaking his head.
I really like this approach. I mean, we, you know, this approach in terms of this OE5 policy and then your interpretation. Because I think as long as I've been on the board, I think the district's always done an outstanding job on financial planning and Mike Merle is hitting that up. But this just takes the level of accountability even higher. And we had talked about it at the last workshop. But one thing I really like is, you know, trying to define what we're looking for for the results for student achievement and tying that budget directly to that. I mean, they're just be in lockstep and defined how they would be in lockstep. So that's one thing I really like, how you've presented this in terms of the interpretation. And then the other thing, and I know Mike always gives us the assumptions, but when we're looking so far out, as you were talking about, you know, this definitely calls out, you know, very clearly that for any look that far out, you know, the assumptions will have to be clearly stated. And I think that's really good.
I'll also mention that I appreciate the staff's time because I know it'll be new, a lot of different reports that we haven't seen before. And so that's going to be new work that Mike's team will have to take on. And I appreciate that because I think that the more reports that we can get will help not only us understand it, but also the public.
I have the impression here that developing these spreadsheets and reports for our use requires the kinds of skills that we now know our kids need at graduation. The ability to think and code and work with computing tools and so forth to communicate clearly. One way to put some of our results policies. I am really kind of amused and interested in the sentence in here that OSPI's documents are not intuitively clear and do not illustrate how expenditures align with district priorities. And I kind of hope that in the next year or so that we can put this document under Chris Reichdahl's eyes and see his reaction. Because I agree, I practically had to sit at Mike's knee to understand the budget for several hours in order just to read the document correctly. And it's going to be good to have that information interpreted in a clearer, interpreted in a clearer way.
That's the one thing I like about it is, as we look at being more and more transparent in our work and having, you know, holding the superintendent and everyone else more accountable to results for our students, being able to really make a correlation between what we spend our money on and what we say our priorities are about kids, I think it's going to be much easier for people to understand because that budget document is ridiculous for...
We're talking about the budget.
It's, it is. It's crazy because you really can't see the direct tie. So I really am excited about this. And I think anybody who wants to ask questions about the budget, they'll get the answers that they need and it'll be easier to understand, or at least easier. So I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing. Thank you. Okay. Do we have any other questions? Okay, so we'll now take a vote to accept the reports as presented and move them forward to a second reading and adoption. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That forward and it'll be brought back for a second reading on October 10th, where we'll have a vote and adoption and certify it, whether it's in compliance, non-compliance, or compliance with noted exceptions. But at this point, it's looking to me like we all think this is in compliance with what we want. Okay, good, thank you. Next up, we have, under the same heading of monitoring district operations, operational expectations OE2, which is the emergency superintendent succession. This is a second reading for the reasonable interpretation. So members of the board have received the superintendent's reasonable interpretation indicators and modern, moderate, blech, I'm having a tongue twist here, monitoring report on the operational expectations OE2. It's now our responsibility to consider the report as evidence of reasonable organizational compliance in this area. So again, I'd like to call on Dr. Stich to give us a short report on this. And this is, again, a second reading.
And this OE2 is emergency superintendent succession, which the board requires me to identify who my successor is if I'm medically incapacitated or even on an air flight somewhere and some emergency decision needs to be made in the district. At the last meeting, the board indicated a desire that there be a statement added to this policy about notification of the board. So I added a bullet in the primary interpretation that says it is also the board and superintendent's expectation that as soon as reasonably possible, the emergency delegate will notify the board and the superintendent, if applicable, of any actions taken while acting as the superintendent. So you had asked for that, I inserted that. We've received no other comments on this from anyone in the public. So at this point, based on the changes I'm presenting that the board had requested, lack of comment from the public and the work that we've done and evidence presented, I ask at this time that the board accepts the reasonable interpretation indicators and monitoring report for OE2 operational expectations and reports to be, and that this report be adopted as presented.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to take any comments or questions by the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board on this matter? Mike, this is your chance to say, "I don't want to be there." And we'll turn everything over to Derek.
No, no, we've got his signature. He's, he's in it to win it.
Policies and initial...
Yeah, he signed in blood.
No, he can speak.
Okay. Seeing no questions or comments by the audience, I would like to call for a motion.
I move that the board accept the superintendent's reasonable interpretation indicators and monitoring report for operational expectations OE2 superintendent succession as presented for adoption.
I second that.
Yep. Got to get that second in there. Do we have any questions or comments by the board on this before we take a vote?
So this is the interpretation of the policy? And we're also accepting the monitoring?
Yes.
And the monitoring is, we were presented last time, the organization chart as well as the signed-off initials by Mike of knowing what all the policies are.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. This is the whole thing for this one. There's about half of them, you'll get monitoring reports during the year. The other half, we're just going to get interpretations this year and start collecting our baseline data and be able to come back next year. And you'll get monitoring reports on all 12 next year. But this one was easy enough, we could interpret and monitor.
Right.
Yeah, I feel the same way. We have the documents that are required by the policy and the interpretation of the policy. We can go ahead and prove it all the way out.
This one probably won't have to be reviewed again until next year.
Next August, I'll bring this back with the org chart and the designation. And if it's not Mike and it's somebody else, it would have the initials and sign off that he's reviewed, or they have reviewed all the policies.
This is part of a set of documents that in the past the superintendent's office would just send to us. Now it's going to be part of the public disclosure. Good change.
Well, it makes it very clear that John not be able to, and we have a situation come up and it's kind of an emergency, that everybody is very clear as to who will be in charge at that point and that the board will be informed and go with the situation. Important for people to understand. All right, so we'll now take a vote for adoption of OE2 as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the operational expectations OE2 is in science and operating policies. So, thank you very much. Next action tonight. Okay, here we go. This is matters reserved for board action. This is policy 1310, governance policy adoption manuals and district operations policies and administrative procedures. Policy 1310 is regarding governance and policy adoption. What I would like to do is have Dr. Stich go over what this is. And this is a second reading.
So this is a policy that I presented to the board as we discussed. The motion that the board made in adopting the governance policies was to remand the policy manual to me as a district operations manual or district operations procedures. In reviewing the 1,000 series, there were several policies that I felt and the board agreed that the board should retain authority over. And one of those would be this, which is how we set policies. So this really, the adjustments to this policy is implementing that motion to remand the policy manual to me. So it gives, it retains the board authority over governance policies and the 1,000 series that impact the board directly. And then it redefines the remaining policies as district operations policies, giving me the authority to make changes to those, but also setting up the expectation that any of those policies I change, I provide a summary of those changes to the board and the affected parties, which hasn't been part of the process in the past. So I've already worked out a format of how to communicate policy changes and we've got a few queued up. I would anticipate with the passage of this policy within the next week to a week and a half, sending out notification to staff as well as the board of some procedure and policy changes that'll help bring things more in alignment with this new policy structure. So the changes were actually much less than I had originally anticipated. I was able to really redefine what was previously the procedures as the district operations policy manual and procedures, and then just redefine what was originally policy as the governance policy in the 1,000 series. I haven't received any comments on this over the past two weeks since presented for first reading. And at this time, I recommend that the board adopt policy 1310, governance policy adoption manuals and district operations policies and administrative procedures as presented.
Okay, at this time, I would like to ask the audience if there's anyone who has questions or comments regarding this change. Done, I'll call for a motion.
I move that the board adopt policy 1310, governance policy adoption manuals and district operations policies and administrative procedures as presented by the superintendent.
Second. Now I'd like to open it to the board for any questions or comments.
So you mentioned that you have a procedure in place to communicate it out to the people that the policy will affect. As far as the board, will it still show up on the superintendent's consent agenda if there's a policy that's been revised? Or is that, are we going to be part of a different communication?
I was going to, just going to do a general email communication to the board to share with you what those are because technically they don't require approval, so I wouldn't put them on a consent agenda for approval.
So it'll just be a different way of communicating it out?
Like an executive summary or something?
Yeah, it's an executive summary. It's just going to say the policy number and name and the, a quick summary of what the change is. And then at the bottom, Elizabeth's done a wonderful job of getting us to the point of actually having all our policies easily accessible through board docs, through the website. So I'll include a hyperlink on the bottom of the electronic document that has that summary. So anybody who wants to look at the actual policies can just click on the hyperlink and take them there. So it should be, I think it's going to create a lot more transparency than we've ever had before in our policy changes. Even though we do them in a public meeting, for those who haven't been here and now that we're actually video recording these and making those available too, they'll be, the summary document, also I anticipate putting on the website as well so people can see the summary of changes that we've had.
That was my question. That was my question. My question was Julie's question, so it's been answered.
Rob, Jim.
Yeah, I'm thinking in terms of what's in statute about the policies that the board is directed by the legislature to establish and approve. And I went over the RCWs as best I could, just basically by searching for, "Board shall adopt a policy which," those kinds of words, and came up with 12 or 13 specific items. But I didn't make that list very formal. I think it'd be nice to identify each of the places in the RCWs where we're required to do something with a policy. I know that'll be a legislative change every year, and...
And that's on our to-do list, is provide, to create an internal document that says, "These are the ones that the board's required to approve." So before I would do changes to those, those would show up under the superintendent's consent agenda, or the board's consent agenda that I'm recommending that we change these policies. Additionally, I want to go through, as we're going through these policies, identify anything that says the superintendent shall annually do A, B, or C, because I don't think we have a master list of that, and I want to make sure I know everything that I'm committed to do in policy, so we can follow up and close the loop and ensure those are being taken care of.
That's basically master list of state policy mandates.
Yes.
Would be...
So that's on our to-do list, we just, with the start of school and trying to get all these interpretations, it hasn't risen to the top of the list yet.
Oh, no, and I didn't want to leave the impression that I wanted this today. I know it's going to take some time to develop some, something like that out of the thing that the revised code of Washington is, and I'm very glad to hear that you're already working on it.
Yeah, we had asked OSPI if they had that, and of course, they didn't. Or WASD, not OSPI, but WASD. We asked WASD, because we had their policy manual service, if they actually had a list of statutory, statutorily required policies that the board had to approve, and they don't.
I do think it's really important for people to understand that the governance policies that we were talking about prior to this, to this agenda item, are all the board's, they are our policies and are not delegated to anybody. They're our policies, and those are the things that we're asking for interpretation and monitoring on. These other policies, the bulk of them are literally just kind of mandated policies that all districts have to comply with. They're not driving our work in any, really in any way. They're more procedural, and so it makes sense to have them delegated to the superintendent with us still having oversight of any changes. And at any time, if a policy surfaces that we have a concern about and want to take that policy back, we can. So we are not giving up any of our authority here, so I just want that to be very clear. Any other comments, questions? Okay.
Only to point out that what you just said is laid out specifically and plainly in the last paragraph of, of policy 1310 that we're reviewing tonight. The superintendent will notify us, and he'll accept our feedback about it. So that's written down.
So we will now take a vote to adopt policy 1310, governance policy adoption manuals and district operations policies and administrative procedures. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, policy 1310 has been adopted, and on the road there. Okay. Uh, next up, we have the board consent agenda. I have, and this includes all approval of minutes since our last board meeting, so it's just the minutes of September 12th meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the board consent agenda?
I move to approve.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is the superintendent's consent agenda, and this has the work of the district, things such as memorandums of understanding between other entities, our warrant vouchers, it's the day-to-day operations of the district. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda?
I move to approve the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Superintendent's consent agenda is approved. Next up, we have a budget update. And I'd like to, oh, you're an eager beaver. You just can't ever wait.
Wait to get up here. So I just want to mention a few things. We're still working on closing the books for 2016, 17. That will likely be completed somewhere towards the end of next month, so we'll have kind of final year-end numbers, most likely, most likely at the last board meeting of October. On the current year, I would just mention that Friday, there's another local funding work group meeting that I will be attending, and there are a number of questions about the new law around school funding that we will be discussing, and it's kind of a long, lengthy list on the agenda, so we're going to get a good sense of now three months or thereabouts into the new rules. What are the top rules that we will be looking at trying to have them maybe think about again, to hopefully get us to a place that makes more sense for funding schools? And we'll, when we get there, I think they're also going to talk strategy about what's their idea legislatively in terms of communicating that, those ideas, so we'll bring that back probably at the, at the first meeting, board meeting in October. The, the one thing, the only thing I want to mention in the current year, because we are, it's September 26th today, so we haven't even had a payroll yet, we, we will obviously be looking very quickly at estimates of expenditures for the year. I mentioned when we met a couple weeks ago, that our enrollment numbers were not what appeared at this point to be tracking with what we've seen in past years. We use the same enrollment estimate methodology that I've used for at least probably the last 10 years, and I was looking back at estimates for enrollment that we got in 2005 from Paul Dennis, and then again in 2013 that we got from Paul Dennis, and then the most recent estimates from Eric Hovey for this current year, and again, elementary and middle school, elementary really primarily is down compared to what we had budgeted, and also even down further than what had been estimated from the, our, our folks that we, we paid to, to make estimates. And I guess anecdotally, what we believe it may have to do is just the cost of housing. I think we're hearing from principals, I know when John's out and talking with buildings, and when others are out talking with buildings, that there may just be more affordable housing in other areas that's impacting us somewhat, but we had budgeted about 11,000, four, about 11,487 elementary students for this school year, and really, it's going to be a matter of what kind of growth we see throughout the year, because we will see growth throughout the year, but we, right now, are kind of estimating that we could be about 250 students below that. Middle school and high school are about a wash with what we had budgeted, so really, it's primarily elementary that we're seeing this, and every year, we get together, John, and, and previous to John, John and John, and, you know, a number of us, Scott and others got together, and we always look at the staffing and make adjustments, and so we've done a few of those things to help offset this, but it, it will be a revenue reduction on the current year, there's no doubt about that. So we'll just continue to monitor that and, and look at a number of things, because there's so many moving targets with the budget, but we'll continually update. I just wanted to kind of formally here, acknowledge that it's next, Monday is our next enrollment count date, so we'll start to get better information, and we'll continue to update that throughout the year, but I just wanted to make sure that, to highlight again what we had talked about a few weeks ago.
Same document that we got in our last board meeting, and the count was done on September 7th?
September 7th, correct.
So some of us believe that maybe enrollment was down a little bit because of the air quality, could have been?
Could have been air quality?
Yeah.
Yeah, could have been, I was having a hard time breathing.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Very smoky. We're, we're not, you know, I mean, we'll, we'll see what the impact is, and Scott and John, along with the, the elementary folks, have created a document that basically is a living enrollment spreadsheet, so as buildings go in, they can go in every day and update that. So the number that we were short has decreased throughout the month, but there's not any kind of written directive, "You should update on this date" or anything like that. So you can kind of see when they've updated this, and they are doing it throughout the month. So we will see an increase throughout the year, it's just a question of how much. When you look at September to average, last year was about 130 more in the average, the year before was about 170 more, we're kind of hoping that we're going to, we're going to be on the higher end this year. But, well, I just wanted to reiterate what we had talked about a few weeks ago, and then just let you know that we're continually looking at it and talking to people to get a sense of what this means for our future estimates, budgets in the future, and our four-year outlooks that we'll be building in the future.
Like a lot of fun.
Yeah, it's, it's always fun.
And again, Mike, you were talking about that discrepancy between enrollment and what was budgeted, it's pretty much throughout the district, right? It's not just one area?
No, no, I mean, I almost, it's almost across the board. There are a few buildings that were above what was, was projected, but for the most part, it's across the board. There's probably a few elementaries that have a little bigger four, that have bigger drops, and they are charades. I know Image was one, if I remember right?
Oh, they're not the big ones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's kind of all over when you think about it.
So, if you don't have it, I don't need the answer to this question, since I'm kind of blindsiding you with it right now, but as far as teacher assignment changes after the start of school goes for this year, has it been, has there been more activity or less because of the differences in enrollment in K5?
I would probably say, if anything, similar to maybe a little less. One of the changes, though, this year that impacted things that maybe makes it seem like there's more, is that the state did increase the funding for the LAP program, and so there have been some openings in schools around the LAP funding that has, have kind of triggered some other movements. But honestly, I think we've had years where there were more changes than this year. There were a few, but not, not maybe five or six, or something like that.
How many, how many split classes do you suppose is being driven out by that?
What do we got about?
Three, four?
Two or three.
Yeah, we have very...
Thank you. For that.
I think we currently have two split classrooms across the entire district.
Wow. Hey, next up, we have superintendent's report.
I have a few quick things I just wanted to run through. Last week, I had a meeting with all of our association leadership, and spent most of the time describing the new governance policies, and how those are intended to work, and the policy we just passed on, policy development. Thought it was a very good meeting, plan on doing those probably twice a year, just bringing everybody together and letting them know some of the long-term vision things we're working on, as well as getting feedback. In general, people said it was a pretty smooth start to the school year from everyone's perspectives. Device purchases, we've got a big thumbs up from Legacy and Frontier on the devices. Frontier is down to, I think they have 10-day users and one parent waiting for a tweak to our acceptable use form, but other than that, they've issued over 800 devices. So they are holding up the way we thought we would. We've had some damage to devices, but middle schoolers are learning what they can and can't do with them. And damage has been minor for just a couple devices. So at this point, we're in the process of placing an order for the lease for the other 13,000, and hope by the end of the week to have some kind of an estimated date on when we can start up deployment for all of the rest of the secondary schools. And we're talking to the four or five schools that are next up on the list as to how they're getting information out and starting to get prepared for this. Last week, went to the Habitat Raise the Roof Breakfast with our CTE and Evergreen Construction, High School Construction Program, and just wanted to give a shout out to the Evergreen Construction Project that works to build a house for Habitat in conjunction with math and construction. So it's a great program, and they were, they didn't receive an award, but they were recognized for the work that they do ongoing with Habitat. We had a community focus group on the bond that we'll be talking about later, and got input from them last week, which has led to some of the documents that we'll be talking about in the workshop, but just wanted to know that we have been working with some community leaders and representatives from around the community on what their thinking is around the bond, to get us to the point, and after tonight, we'll be preparing to have a community survey that should be going out in the next couple weeks. Met this week with two of our board members, as well as Gail Spohler and Elizabeth, to talk about our linkage and communication plan. We've come up with a plan that we're going to be running by the board, that's going to have you running this year, and meeting with a lot of people.
Thanks, guys.
We've got probably seven meetings during the school day that you'll be expected to hit, hopefully, at least half of, and then probably seven evening meetings that would require all of, evening or afternoon meetings that require all of the board members in attendance to be able to facilitate sort of focus groups with teachers, classified staff, parents, and the ones during the day, we're hoping to get you out to each of the high schools and do a focus group with students from each of the six high schools in the district, as well as kind of counting our senior citizen tour coming up here in October. If, hopefully, you can make it there, we'll have some questions for you to be able to get feedback from them. I will be participating in the walk and talk at Riverview on Friday, walking, sort of a walking school bus with kids, looking forward to doing that. Also, this Friday is Gary Thompson's retirement party. I am very sad to see Gary going.
I am too.
While we have capable people there, Gary's been just a phenomenal transportation director for this district, running the largest bus fleet in, John always said, "The state of Washington," and having been in Oregon and knowing that most of those are privatized, and the big city ones have a lot of public transport, I'd be willing to go out on a limb and say that's the largest bus fleet in the Pacific Northwest for a school district that Gary has run for, I don't even know how many years, and done such a wonderful job. So they'll be having an open house this Friday, and hopefully, you can drop in and, and say, well, good luck to Gary on that. And then one last thing that came in at the last minute, and the press release is supposed to come out today, I had a call from the college board today. We have a Mountain View student graduate from last year that was named one of the two top AP scholar students in the state of Washington.
Wow.
Annie Liu, who is going to be headed off to Harvard, was the Female AP Scholar of the Year for the state of Washington from Mountain View High School. So, able to kind of say that and scoop the news on that one. Gail's hopefully on top of that, and she's checking in with Mountain View, trying to get the details on that, so that we can get information out on that. So that was a really exciting phone call to receive today.
Good news.
That's what I have.
Great. Okay, next up, we have board comments. Does anyone have any?
John, you forgot to mention that we, let me take along on Friday morning to superintendent's breakfast at Orchard's Elementary. So I attended with John, and we had about, was there 12 students, that asked us questions for about an hour, so we were, which was fantastic, they asked some really good questions, especially for John, and, but they, they asked us questions, we asked them questions about their school experience, and so we got some really good feedback, and having our linkage meeting yesterday that we're going to bring back with the, to the board, some ideas around that and getting that student voice and that student feedback. So thank you for letting me join you on that.
Yeah, and it was great feedback we got from the students. I asked them about mindfulness training they're getting, about community circles, about PBIS, about personalized learning and...
Technology.
Technology, and the kids, of course, we're doing these things, you know, we do meditation in the morning, we have circle time, and so a lot of the social, emotional work that we've been starting to implement over the last two years as part of our equity initiative, it was great to hear firsthand from the kids how they actually have a positive response to it and are appreciating it, and feel that it is making a difference on how kids are treating each other.
How were the students selected to have breakfast with you?
I didn't ask this time. Usually it's somewhat random, but...
It was third through fifth graders, so there was like probably three or four from each. each grade level that came, but...
Risky ones in the group that ask fun questions?
Oh.
We've had, in the past, when John Dieter did this, every once in a while, you'd get one. I remember him and the red-headed little kindergartner that was like, "I'm done, let's go," and off she went.
John, can I share my favorite part?
Sure.
So after, so after a full hour of questioning, and John would explain all of the things that he does at the district and how he's in charge of all of the schools, one little girl was like, "How can you get to every school building during the day?" Like, because when he, you know, told her how many buildings we had and how many schools. And then, and then he would explain how he's got people at all of the different places that do work. So at the end, she's like, "So basically, you just sit around all day and hire people." The good summary of our hour.
If I do a good job of that, that's most of what I do.
Beautiful. Hearing it put that way, too.
Were they in awe of how tall you are?
Yeah, I got a couple of comments. And I usually point out that I'm point guard size in the NBA.
Good. Awesome. That sounds like fun.
Fun.
I'm hoping that we can get those dates of the other ones, because I know we'd like to, each of us would like to attend at some point, so we can get them on our calendars.
Well, I want to mention that last week, I attended the WASDA Legislative Assembly, which, yes, in the past, had been the purview of Michael Parsons. Like, I'm taking his role a little bit.
Did you survive?
You know, I thought it was one of the most interesting couple of days in the state political work side of what we do. They started the conference with a pre-conference set of meetings around Large Schools Caucus that I know he and Edry Geiger from Vancouver had been keen to develop and foster. And the impression I have coming out of that is that the WASDA people facilitating this have gone through some leadership development and really ran a great meeting where we discussed some topics. I'll get into more detail about that, but it was the Large Schools Caucus, and then an hour with discussions around equity and access, followed by the Federal Relations Network. And that's where I learned that Mary Fritakis, who's been leading the WASDA Federal Relations Network for the last 20 years or so, has not filed for reelection. And so that position is going to come open. And then we had a day of people like Chris Reichdahl of OSPI, and a few panels of people talking about the various issues. And again, I'll get into more detail about that in our workshop, but what had came out, some really important problems became identified with the House Bill 2242 around the regionalization funding, that we'd also begun to suspect had problems. But it was really clear that we're going to need to advocate pretty hard to have that changed into something more generous towards our smaller, outlying school districts. And then we went through 47 policy proposals in a rapid-fire parliamentary procedure, which kind of surprised me how well they did that. And it was more interesting than the first time I'd ever done it. But there were no real surprises in there. The policies that were proposed and passed or failed basically ran along the lines of the WASDA Legislative Committee's recommendations with one or two exceptions. None of them seemed to impact our specific district's needs and so forth. And then they gave me a way to prioritize all of those proposals and positions, and I did the best I could, talking about equity first, and then school funding for construction, and the need to get that settled in connection with our bond. And then kind of in the third group was the other issues that we're always talking about. And I forgot to take a picture of that. I apologize for that, but, like I said, there'll be more detail when we can get into more detail. It's pretty wonky and kind of boring for everybody else.
I just wanted to make a comment. I'm on the Executive Sponsors Council at the city of Vancouver, and so the last couple meetings that we had this last month, we had an overview of the Police Department and an overview of the Parks and Rec Departments of the city. And what was really interesting was the, was how much they appreciated our involvement with, you know, with the police, and they talked about restorative justice and our SROs, and, and they were very complimentary to our staff in working with the Police Department, various different things that we interact with, with them. And then the same thing with the Parks. They said, "We're the best district to work with as it pertains to the use of our facilities and the collaboration that we have with the Parks Department." So I just wanted to give some acknowledgement to that. It, it was nice to hear that in that meeting, and as more information comes forward from that, that council, I'll be bringing it to everyone, I hear what they decide to do. So. Executive.
Yes, I did have one thing to add, sorry about that. I'm also on the Board for Fort Vancouver Regional Library District, and we had a board meeting last week. And within that district, there's a big push to work with school districts to sign up every student to have a library card, a public library card. So I know in this next year, they'll probably be approaching our district, you know, to see how, you know, that can be accomplished. So it's a program to really streamline it, and I think it's a really positive thing, you know, a partnership for the school district to work with the public library system. So I'm excited about that.
Yeah. Card online?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You have a library card?
I do have a library card.
All right.
But I have the plastic one. Old school.
I do, too.
It's probably 25 years old.
Yes. Two, actually. Well, Noma gave me one.
Okay. Do we have any future agenda items that anyone would like to bring forward tonight? All right, so we will go into recess. We will recess and sign documents, then we will have, we'll reconvene in a workshop where we will debrief our board meeting. We'll have an initial interpretation of operational expectations, OE9, communicating with the public. We will have a facilities update, a legislative update, and an additional superintendent's update, and then return after that. Thank you for being with us tonight.